The council meeting of September 22nd, 2025. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And Mr. Franci, could you take the role, please?
Mr. Fantini.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
Do you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, announcements and committee reports. I've got a couple of them. First off, just awareness that the Anacortes Public Library will open at 1:00 PM on Thursday, the 25th. Staff will be in training in the morning, so please be aware, the library will not open until 1:00 PM on Thursday. Oyster Run is this Sunday, the 28th. If you've forgotten, it is billed as the, this is the 42nd Oyster Run. It's billed as the largest motorcycle run in the Pacific Northwest. Technically, it's nine to five that day, but you can expect motorcycles all weekend, so please be aware and look out for motorcycles. Our Avenue, just for your awareness, we are moving, the, the port is moving large pipes through our avenue. This is a project with T. Bailey, and I know we've talked about this before, but anticipate there are over 300 moves, I think, of large pipes, upwards of 120-foot pipes. And the important thing to note, we did a, there was a run this morning, or late morning, and they have to come down the wrong way on our avenue. So in the southbound lanes, they're coming north. So it's with flaggers and all that, that's part of their heavy haul permit that council approved. So it seemed to work out okay. I think it took only a few minutes, so that's a good sign for the first move, but I just want everybody to be aware, this is going to be going on with potentially a couple of these a day for the next month or so. So just beware. Uh, let's see, Anacortes Fire Department is hosting an open house on the 12th of October, and that's from 12 to 3:00, free and open to the public. This is part of October, which is Fire Prevention Month. And also in October, it's typically Emergency Preparedness Month, not officially, but the great shakeout is October 16th that the city will be participating in. But on that note, Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, is offering free community emergency response training in Anacortes, and that's starting on the 13th of October. So timing with the day after the open house. Planning, prevention, and skills necessary to survive disaster while helping others. Registration link is available on our website or the Skagit Department of Emergency Management website. A couple of ferry announcements. Washington State Ferry is hosting online community meetings, and they're seeking input and giving updates on peak service season, electrification plans, terminal construction, and workforce development. That's going to be October 2nd, 2025. So two options that day, 12:30 and 6:00 PM. Registration link also available on our website or Washington State Ferry's website. And the last announcement related to ferries, I mentioned this last week, Skagit County Technical Advisory Group. The county is looking for a technical advisory group to evaluate agreements for any ferry replacement options. The applications are open until the 26th, and application links also available county website. So get your applications in if you want to be part of that group. And that's all I have, and I will go over to first committee meeting, Planning Committee. Counsel.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
The Planning Committee met right before this meeting, Ms. Cleveland McGrath, Ms. Moulton, myself. We met with Planning Director Coleman and Planning Manager Libby Grage, and we talked about two things. One, the comp plan, and second, the matrix report. The matrix report is on our agenda tonight, so we'll hear more about it then, but we went into some detail on some of the recommendations, some, some recommendations we disagreed with, some, some pieces of the department's work that weren't addressed by the report. And we'll have more commentary, I imagine, when that agenda item comes up later on in this meeting. The comp plan is chugging along, the Planning Commission is continuing its review. Ideally, I understand the Planning Commission will be done with its review by the end of October, which means we would receive the comp plan and development regulation updates sometime immediately after that. And again, to emphasize the, the deadline mandated by the state for adoption of this plan is the end of the year. So the end of October puts us into November, November, December are busy months to begin with, including with Thanksgiving and then the Christmas holiday. So we definitely encourage council to review the draft comp plan and now the draft development regulations document that is on the Planning Department's website, so that we don't have to delay council meetings after we receive the recommendation from the Planning Commission. We ran out of time in the Planning Committee meeting to further flesh out exactly what that will look like, but we imagine that we will receive a list of recommended changes to the plan from the Planning Commission, such that we can make some identification of which changes we might want to make to the document. So it will still be valuable to review the initial draft that is on the website right now, and it will certainly save us a lot of time and help us achieve the end-of-the-year deadline without pushing too deep into December, when public process is, is certainly not ideal. So we really ideally would focus a lot of work on our end in the month of November. That's all I have. Thanks.
Questions for Planning Committee? All right, next up, Fiber Committee. Do we have, do we have a fiber?
Oh, that was me.
Mr. Walters.
The Fiber Committee, well, I met earlier last week, and we talked about the Fiber Department's next report to council and some policy changes, which we'll probably propose for integration into the municipal code relating to dark fiber leases. And so staff will bring that forward. I think Ms. McDougal and Ms. Hubick weren't able to be at that meeting, so staff, we're going to loop them in, get their feedback, and then propose at some future meeting the changes and also do the review of where we are. Nothing, nothing really earth-shattering, but we needed to do some work related to the EDA grant.
Questions there? Any other announcements or committee reports?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
I just wanted to let all of my fellow council members and Mayor Miller know that on October 20th, we'll be having the District 14 Meeting for Association of Washington Cities. This is a great chance. It'll be in Ok- uh, Oak Harbor at the Yacht Club. It's a great opportunity to come, speak to the association about legislative priorities, what AWC will be putting forward, as well as what's important and happening in our city, and I would love to see some attendance. It is Monday morning-ish, so I know that can be hard for some of us that work, but if anyone's available, would love your, your support at that meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other announcements? Okay, we will move on to Item 4, which is public comment. Any member of the public wish to address the council, anything that is not on our agenda? That would be the time. I didn't have anybody sign up in advance, so, okay. We'll move on to our consent agenda, Items 5A and 5B. Counsel.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I move to approve Items 5A and B.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Moulton, second by Ms. Hubick, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're on to other business, Item 6, and first up is 6A. This is Developmental Services Improvement Study Presentation, and better known as the Matrix Report, but we've got Mr. Coleman ready to introduce our guest, and of course we have Mr. Ram as well. But Mr. Coleman, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Hello to everybody out there watching. Tonight, we have Allison Breckie with the Matrix Consulting Group, presenting the findings of their development services study that they did for the planning, building, and engineering department permitting process. Let's do a little, little check here. Allison, can you hear us okay? It looks like you're just about ready to go.
I, I can hear you okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect.
All right, so I'll just pass it on to Allison.
Thanks so much, John. Good evening, Mayor Miller and council members of Anacortes. My name is Allison Breckie, and I'm a manager with Matrix Consulting Group. I co-lead this community development-focused area of the company. I'm really excited to be here with all of you tonight to present the final report and recommendations of the development review process improvement study.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Apologies for the interruption. Is it possible to turn her up just a little bit? Because I, I don't know if anybody else is having trouble, maybe I'm, but I'm having trouble.
Okay. All right, see if we can't either maybe-
I also adjusted it on my end, too, if that helps.
Yeah, I think that's a little better. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay. I appreciate that. I'm using headsets, just because there's some background noise where I'm at. So here's a quick agenda of what I'll be just discussing tonight. I have just over 10 slides tonight. There'll definitely be a chance for you all to ask questions at the end of the director's presentation, which is directly going to follow my own presentation. If there is a need just to clarify or ask a quick question during my present, presentation, please go ahead and do so. First, I'm going to provide is a brief overview of the goals of the study. Next, I'm going to talk about the study's methodology and the approach, approaches Matrix took. I'm going to highlight the key findings from the study, looking at both the strengths of the current city's structure and development review process, as well as opportunities for improvement. And finally, I'm going to go through those recommendations, essentially a summary of the primary recommendations from each focus area of the report. So the city really wanted to do the study for a variety of reasons, but the primary reasons were to streamline the application process, increase predictability of the process, document the process that's currently occurring, and then better integrate the documented process with Smart Gov. We responded to the initial request that the city put out, and most of our clients across the country have similar goals to what Anacortes hoped to achieve, achieve in the study. The methodology, methodology we took had some key deliverables throughout the project. The first key deliverable was the current state profile, and that actually was an overview of the operational practices and processes, staffing, structure, and workload. So really just capturing what's currently happening involved not only initial interviews from, of, of staff members, but also in-depth look at data that actually came directly from your permitting software system, Smart Gov. We then went to the customers and get in, and get their input. We had a customer survey that went out via Survey Monkey. We also held in-person focus groups, and there was also a few follow-up conversations that I had individually, as well as a virtual focus group. So we had actually a great response there, and there is a survey analysis that's a part of the report, as an appendix. Linked with the current state profile, we did do a comparison of the current processes to really what we consider best practices across the industry, looking at technology, workload, and other best practices of high-performing organizations. The next step was really the analysis part, so really taking all the data that we collected upfront, including results from the state voter outreach and the staff interviews, and really just trying to start working out recommendations, while also touching base with staff as needed, just to clarify some of the data that we were reviewing. We did the last organization and staff review, so they looked at a couple draft reports, had some really good conversations come out of there, certainly recognized that sometimes at the end, we're not in complete agreement, but we certainly feel that this captures the main issues that we hoped to address and push forward as implementation. And so in the report, there is an implementation table, about 60 recommendations, and you can see that they have been prioritized for how the city can approach them moving forward. So I was fortunate to visit your beautiful community earlier this year and went in City Hall. I visited with, as I mentioned, like conducted staff interviews and visited with staff in the PCE and PW departments. And during those interviews and discussions, I was immediately able to see that one of Anacortes' top strengths is certainly the group of staff who are motivated and supportive of improvement efforts. They asked us a lot of questions, which was great. It's always wonderful to interview staff members who are engaged and willing to provide some honest feedback. And that will be very important as you move forward with implementation of the recommendations into the future. We are also able to see how the staff that are primarily in charge of development review were co-located in the same suite, the City Hall, and they share a public counter. We also learned quickly that they, Anacortes had moved into the digital world of development review and was utilizing Smart Gov as their primary permitting management software system. And along with those strengths, we were able to see some areas for improvement, or areas of opportunity for improvement, and that would be some training, definitely acknowledging that there can be an increased approach or effort for onboarding training as new staff start, and certainly also some training about rules and responsibilities of staff in the development review process. Closely linked with that would be the recommendation to create and formalize standard operating procedures for all of the processes that are a part of the larger development review aspect of the city. And then lastly, yes, Anacortes is ahead of many other communities in terms of an active permitting software system in place. However, this particular system, as well as for, for many of them that we see across the country, the maintenance aspect is highly time-consuming, and that is falling right now all on the development review staff and taking a significant amount of time. So I'm going to dive into each focus area of the report. You can see that the report is broken up into these topic areas, as well as the implementation table is organized in this way. So some of these management and administration recommendations I just highlighted with my previous slide, but there is a recommendation just to create a development review mission and related goals. This is very typical for development review process that cross, crosses over many disciplines and different departments, which is the case in Anacortes. It's important that the city decide, decide what the overall mission is for the development review and some related goals with that. There's definitely ways that you can link those goals to your comprehensive plan, some cities take that approach, but overall, it should be discussed and determined as a city and as a group. Linked with that would be developing standard operating procedures and clarifying the roles and responsibilities of staff in the development review process. Linked with that is also just ensuring that there is clear leadership and accountability in the development review process. A recommendation we discuss, or an idea we discuss is developing a, of creating, excuse me, a development leadership council, but that council should have a primary staff lead person. It's important to realize, though, that a lot of your directors currently have a lot of other tasks assigned to them, so it would just be important to think about workload as you determine who should be a part of that leadership council and who should lead the development review process for the city moving in, into the future. Lastly, there is definitely recognition that there's some large-scale developments being proposed in Anacortes, which is really exciting and significant for the community, but due to their extensive development review process, shoreline reviews and other environmental reviews, the city should consider a third-party consultant for some aspects of the review process. That would ensure that the process is staying timely, even if it has several different aspects of review. Technology, so as I mentioned, the city is using Smart Gov. There's two components to Smart Gov, and we see this for most permitting software systems. That's, of course, the side, the portal that the staff interacts with on a daily basis, and then the customer facing, or the customer portal. So some recommendations we saw for the customer-facing side of Smart Gov is to improve the instructions for the applicant, to really accurately depict the review process, helping applicants understand what type of permit or application they should be selecting, and making sure that there are clear descriptions of what's required for that, for that type. This is going to improve consistency in basically what's given to the city for review. As much as possible, the city is inner, is utilizing GIS in some deciding ways, if there were some ways to interact GIS with Smart Gov on the customer-facing side, that would be a great improvement, too. On the staff side, it's just ensuring that there's consistency in the comments, review comments, and conditions of approval that staff draft in, in the system. Also, improving reporting capabilities. We certainly were challenged with this as we were trying to request data from Smart Gov, really trying to capture the workload that had been occurring in the city for the past three years. And there's definitely some ways that, that the reporting mechanisms and capabilities can be improved with Smart Gov. So for the overall review processes, this is probably the most in-depth section of the report, but the good news is the first one is almost complete. I guess, I must object to myself by putting complete on this, on this slide here, but we are going to actually give a final copy of the checklist at the end of this week. We're really excited about it, and actually, the feedback from staff was fantastic, but the city's going to walk away with comprehensive application and permit checklist for 25 of their main processes. We also went a little above and beyond and created some standardized reference points. So when you reference a site plan, you know, myself as a professional planner, I could describe that to somebody, but your community member might not really know what we're talking about. So we actually give some examples of a general or simple site plan, and then a more specific specialized site plan that might be required for, you know, a specific environmental review process. So it's going to be really exciting. We're also going to touch on some stormwater requirements early on in the building permit process, so that applicants aren't finding out about stormwater requirements at the very end, which we all know never makes anybody happy. Uh, okay, formalizing the intake completeness process. So just really making sure that the application that's received or the permit received is complete. This is very linked to the checklist component, so you're making sure that your applicant or customer is giving the information that the city needs to, number one, be able to determine if it's complete to move forward. That's the first, most important step. When that step is either skipped over or not clarified to the applicant, there's usually some upset parties on either side. Also linked with this is just really establishing and adopting clear review timelines. You're in the state of Washington, as we all know, the state is pushing this down, too, on you all, and so your staff is aware of that, and once that's in place, getting that recognized in ordinance, and then keeping staff accountable to meeting them. Making sure routing criteria is established. That means just really determining what groups of staff need to look at what particular permits and applications. It's typically determined by what we call workflows in the Smart Gov permitting software system. There's a lot of different permit types right now, which is making some of the workflows complex. We're recommending maybe consolidating some of those to make them more simple, and then making sure that you have the right people of staff looking at that, and making sure each of those staff members or groups of staff, review discipline staff, are prioritizing those development reviews. Again, linked with the management and administration recommendations, making sure expectations and responsibilities of, of applicants are, are described to them, like they, they understand what is expected of them. And then lastly, re-instate staff-written summary for pre-applications. We're definitely seeing pre-application as a successful best prac, best practice for the other jurisdictions we work for. I think it's just important that the applicant leaves with a summary of next steps, and really that, you know, to verify the process occurred, and then both parties know what is expected of, of each of them. Customer interaction and education. So suggestion of providing an online meeting scheduler for staff consultations. We recognize this is not going to be for everybody, okay? You're going to still have the community member who wants to come in and talk to a live person. I can respect that and understand that, but there are some people who are working full-time in a way, in a, in an easy online meeting that they can do while at the office for a quick, a quick clarification of, I need to remove some trees in my yard, what sort of process will that trigger? You know, I'm close to the shoreline, whatever that might be. There is the way to create an online meeting scheduler for staff consultations. There might be a way that the city can make the argument that this could reduce in-person counter hours. That could be a temporary, you know, solution. It certainly could help adjust with the later recommendation for just the needed staff time to keep making improvements to Smart Gov. We can circle back to that if we need to. So design and development guidebook. So we see these used in different ways. You know, there's still the capability for someone to go to the city's website and essentially pull up a digital book that just guides them through the process. There's links to different processes. As we know, everybody learns differently. There's some people that need to talk to the person and listen to the process, process. There's some people who are visual learners that need to see it laid out for them before they feel confident in starting the process. Making sure all minimal submittal materials are consistent between the permit checklist and the Smart Gov submittal. So it's making sure that an applicant can go through the checklist, understand what's this expected of them, and then when they get to the Smart Gov interaction and portal, the same things are being asked from them. You know, not having a surprise occur where, you know, someone has a whole pile of, of what's expected for, for a site plan application, but then it's, something else is asked in the Smart Gov portal. That will just take some, you know, back and forth, but the good news is the checklists are about to be finalized, and that will allow your staff to just start making those changes in Smart Gov. And then lastly, just creating a high-functioning and central development review webpage. So what we see happening a lot is just that there's links to various departments and the different processes specific to each department that's spread out through city websites. You really want to actually have that be one spot on the website. Sometimes cities have like a different name for that that is linked to the overall city website, but is customized, and you can advertise it differently. But that's where you can centralize certainly all information about Smart Gov's submittals and flow charts, checklist, it would just be the homepage for the development review Regulatory standards. I, I'm confident John would agree that this is probably where we butted heads, heads, heads the most. And, you know, it's, it's, it's to be expected, certainly in the state of Washington, where there's a lot of oversight coming from the state levels, and also it really comes down to just what the city is comfortable doing. So number one priority is finalizing that ordinance 4092 to ensure compliance with RCW. That's largely with the timelines that we spoke to earlier. Another recommendation that's certainly being discussed in the state of Washington is raising CFA exempt levels permitted by WAC. Of course, very dependent on what the community feels comfortable with. Anacortes is a smaller community, those high exempt levels would never be appropriate for Anacortes, but there might be some ways or some areas that could be raised. I should clarify, just what that means is that essentially it shortens the environmental review process for those types of projects that would need the exempt level. Transferring some quasi-judicial development review applications to the hearing examiner. The hearing examiner, I think, is one of the strengths of what's allowed in Washington State for development review process, and if you have, overall applicants seem to be very respectful of the process. You know, it just seems to work very well, but you've got to make sure that you have the right type of applications that go into the hearing examiner. There's always ways that you can speed up the process if you have it go into the hearing examiner, rather than a larger public hearing process with council. Linked with that is expanding administrative approvals, which would likely be your Director of Planning, Community, and Economic Development. And then there is discussion, prior to Matrix, I was actually working over in the city of Port Angeles. We were in the process of adopting a city code that has a lot of the similar design re- review aspects that Anacortes' code does, and there might be value in considering an administrative design review application process for some of that project criteria that's in your regulatory documents. It's just requiring staff to do a pretty extensive review that might need to be formalized more, so it's not slowing down a building permit process. Also would help the applicant and customer realize that there's actually a design review process occurring. Sometimes that's harder to understand when they feel like they just applied for a building permit, and then they're receiving comments about design guidelines and design criteria. It typically doesn't make an applicant feel satisfied. Lastly, adopt a sidewalk fee and lieu program to provide alternatives to sidewalk frontage improvements. Knowing that sidewalk doesn't exist everywhere in Anacortes, there might be opportunities where you can encourage infill development without requiring the sidewalk to be built immediately. That fee and lieu would go into a program that then could do more comprehensive sidewalk improvement projects for the city. Staffing and organization. Of course, staffing is typically one of the aspects that has a budget aspect to it, but overall, just emphasizing, making sure we reallocate staff time in planning and engineering and development review. This is just recognizing that your staff is doing a lot. There's a lot of long-range planning effort. The council member was talking about the comprehensive plan update. It's a significant undertaking for any city in Washington to complete, even when you have a consultant. So just recognizing that you still need to have staff that can complete this development review process. Overall, considering an increase of one full-time employee, essentially half would be needing for assistance for permit intake and issuance, and then the other half could be supporting the permitting leadership team. So there's lots of different ways that the city could approach that, but looking at the workload and doing our full analysis, there's definitely a need to help with the permit intake and issuance part because of the needs and demands, excuse me, of Smart Gov, and then just ensuring that there is a lead person for the permitting leadership team. It can be that primary contact person for applicants and customers. And then conduct an RFI for an en-called private third-party planning and engineering review company or consultant when workload surpasses staffing capacity. So again, it's just making sure that there's something that's available to the city to avoid backlogs, right? It's just to make sure that the city is keeping up with development review, knowing with the beautiful location of Anacortes and that beautiful shoreline you have. It does definitely trigger some extensive environmental reviews, and sometimes it would be justified to, let me back up, it would actually, applicants would, and we heard this in stakeholder conversations, they would be okay paying a different fee upfront if it meant that the review process could be faster, even if they're utilizing a third-party review body. Okay, and I believe we're going to follow, I'm going to stop sharing for a sec, John, so that you and Andy can...
Yeah.
Okay.
If you want to hang out for questions here in a moment.
Absolutely.
So, Council, what we'd like to do now is, before we jump into questions, Andy and I are going to talk about what our implementation steps are, and hopefully that'll inform a lot of your, answer a lot of your questions before we jump into the questions part. So, as Allison pointed out, we did this project as, we recognized that there was inefficiencies, and the customers were unhappy with our process, so we went through a genuine process to do some self-introspection and look internally, and with a third party, an impartial observer, look at what our problems were and air it out here. So also, we got, through Matrix, they did a good job of communicating with our past customers and potential future customers to see what the real issues are and what their concerns are, and so that's all here for us to see. At the end of this process, we've received 62 recommendations from Matrix here, and I'll put those up as a visual reminder of what we're talking about. Of those 62, we'd love to address all of them, like immediately, now, let's do it. Okay, tomorrow, we're better. But that's not unfortunately how it's going to work. It's just not feasible to address all of these, so we've established the higher priorities. As Allison mentioned, they did rate these as high and medium, and then suggested timeframes to get these done. We have identified 27 of the highest, and some of them we've done, and some of them we are deferring till future. I'd like to point out, these are sort of a web of implementation ideas, so there's a lot of ideas here, and as soon as you touch one, you're kind of pulling that string on another one, too. So it is tricky to like, oh, if I'm doing this one, let's do this one also, and the next thing you realize, like, if you've committed to doing them all at once again. So it is a little bit challenging to just choose some without choosing all of them all at once, so we recognize that. We presented this to staff last week and talked about these priorities, and we want to point out, staff's really excited about this project. There's a lot of newer staff, and as you saw in this review, is there wasn't clear guidelines for staff, just like there's not the best guidelines for the applicants. And so we recognize that, and through this process, we're hoping to get some help with that. And in the documentation that Matrix provided, they did provide some general flow charts, and they're also creating those 25 checklists for process, for application processes. And so these are things that we are working on already. The ones that we've chosen are more of the structural fixes, so we want to focus on the high-level projects, the high-level recommendations, sort of these overarching process flow things before we can get down into the weeds and make specific fixes to either code or to our permitting software. Anything thrown so far? Are you doing good? All right. So, we're addressing these big-picture things first, and hopefully, that's our strategy. There's three areas of focus that we're focusing on that we identified as a management team. So one of the recommendations is here is to have a permitting center management team, and so we've selected the managers. So that's the planning manager, the city engineer, the building official, and myself and Andy. So we are the management team. We selected these priorities, and we are leading the meetings with staff to implement these. So we're already working on the vision statement, and we've got a good working draft with staff from our meeting last week. The other areas we're working on are define each position's roles and responsibilities. That's the biggest need that we see, is making sure that everybody that's involved in the review process understands, A, what the review process is, and B, their role within that and how everybody interacts. So we're working on flow charts for that, and ultimately, one of the recommendations in here is for standard operating procedures. So we'll be working on those a little bit down the line, partially because we need to actually ask for a little bit of money in the 2026 budget to carry that through. And so this really is the highest level, you know, internals, flow, structure-type fixes. So those are the highest priority ones that we're working on. And then next area is training staff to standardize documents, create a method to unify the staff comment documents that's provided to the applicant, and improved comments and Smart Gov interface that applicants see. So that's how we interact with the applicant. So once we know what we're doing, then we can start immediately making changes to how we interact and make sure that those interactions are clearer. And I think Allison pointed out, we want transparency, we want repeatable process that applicants can understand, and it's going to be the same for them every time they apply for something. So consistent and repeatable, transparent. And then finally, the third priority that we're working on immediately is better info on the web for applicants. So that's the intake checklists, the permit center scheduling, permit center hours, and website interface. So again, customer-focused fixes that we can work on immediately. Some of those are going to be kind of challenging, so they've recommended having a scheduling like a scheduling mechanism on our website so people can schedule a time to come in and meet with a planner or an engineer or a building inspector, plans examiner, to ask questions during a prescribed time when staff is dedicated to answering those kinds of hours, those kinds of questions. That is likely to come, that's recommended, potentially, I should say, some reduced permit center hours. Logistically, we're not sure how that's going to be managed or if that's going to happen, but that is the recommendation. But through the schedule, our people will have the opportunity to just schedule a time and know when they come in, and know that they're going to have somebody to talk to and not just stand in line behind somebody else who has an undefined amount of time with the staff. So want to make sure that the counter works a little bit more, a little smoother. So we've heard the complaints, we took a step back, we looked inward, we examined our process, and there's a strong desire to fix the process from the bottom up. We don't know that there's a lot of structural stuff that we need to do, but we definitely need to formalize the process, and we're appreciative of the work that Matrix put into this report. It's very helpful for us. Staff is excited. Everybody is really happy to have some real guidelines for how to go forward, and, you know, normally at the end of a presentation, you say, "The end." But this is not the end, this is just the beginning of our process of improving what we do. So hopefully, that's all.
Just wanted to add a couple of quick comments. The consultant also touched on this, and I think John did as well. It's one part of the organization that is really literally in multiple different places, and so time and again, you always hear about development service centers having difficulty. I think we're fixing that structurally, making Coleman be master in chief, whatever, in charge of the development services function of the city. The portions of it will remain in Public Works, but again, he is the one that'll keep an eye on that. I will be also watching it from a reporting standpoint. That's one thing that I would always ask the engineer, like, hey, are we doing okay? Are we caught up on the permits? He's like, yeah, we're fine, and then I'd hear, we're not okay. So we're going to have actual reporting out of the software so that we can see it from our positions as well as the management team, establishing goals or targets, you know, like permits should only take this amount of time usually. It's something that we don't have now, we just haven't written anything down, basically, and we're going to write a lot of things down, and I think it'll help a lot to document what we're doing so everybody's on the same page, people know what to expect, and that we get really good at issuing permits on a timely basis.
Okay, so I know you weren't going to go through all 14 pages of these recommendations, but maybe it might be worthwhile for Council to know some of the highlighting here.
So what you see on, and well, of course, this is on the screen, so this will be available after the meeting. What we've done here is itemize, the items that we've initiated are shown in light blue, and this is just a tracking document that we're using so we can know which ones we're trying to achieve. So, you know, establish a mission statement, so, you know, we're effectively complete on that, we're pretty close to having that done, and then implementing an onboarding training program for new development review staff. So that's that big one, that making sure that everybody knows their role in the process, and we're actively starting to meet with staff already this week to formalize this, and this is going to be a big push, this is going to take a little time. But I think we also want to point out, of all of these goals, we hope to have them all achieved in a year. Our purpose is to move through these fairly methodically, but also with some urgency to get things moving. It's in not just the community's best interest, it is in our best interest to have the permit process working better. So there will be, you know, slowdowns during the process as we are working on these things instead of working on permits, but in the long run, that's the goal.
So Council will have this, obviously, in the packet, and before we go to questions, I want to make sure any member of the public weigh in on this before I turn it over to Council questions, because I know I'm going to have a lot of questions. I know Council is writing down the questions. Okay, all right, Council.
Mayor Miller, just a quick question. So this, in this form, this isn't in the packet yet, but it will be sent this, so they're all together nicely like this?
So it's actually in the report. The only difference is, we went through here and highlighted the ones that we're going to try to get done first, like by the end of the year. But we can send this to you so you can see that what we thought we could accomplish, and the staff were like, are you sure? So I'm not sure, we're being, like he said, we're being ambitious, we want to move now, we're pushing staff to really get this thing going. So, but we'd be happy to share this with you, that's kind of our goal, is to get the blue ones done by the end of the year.
Yes, I really appreciate the sense of urgency and the actionability of these items, and I do like seeing it in this 14-page document instead of spread out through the 186 or whatever it is, so that would be great, because I really like the notes also and the highlighting. So that would be great. Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Well, I thank Allison and Matrix for this report. I think this is one of the best reports that I've read in my time on City Council. It's an excellent example of why we engage consultants, because they are subject matter experts, well, hopefully, they are subject matter experts with more depth and breadth and time than our own staff has to help us improve. I think generally, the recommendations are very much consistent with what I would recommend and what I have recommended, including in the Department of Commerce's new guidance on local project review. It makes a great read, I definitely recommend it. The report is an excellent roadmap for improvement. I think there are a couple of things I would like to highlight. One, that consistent development review mission across departments and clear lines of authority, incredibly important just to set the table for what it is we're trying to do here. The consolidated pre-app notes, I was pretty surprised that this was identified as a recommendation, because I was surprised that we weren't doing that work.
We are.
Okay.
That's an easy thing.
Maybe some more exploration of that one. But certainly, the objective to do consolidated pre-app notes is quite important, especially for any kind of complicated project. And then I do think that they're just, and I expect that this will be reflected in that consistent development review mission, there needs to be a clear focus on making it easier for applicants than the opposite of that. So just as a couple of examples, and these are recommendations I disagree with. One of the recommendations, which would require a code amendment, is to make pre-application neighborhood meetings into post-application neighborhood meetings. I've been involved in a couple of those meetings myself. This is an innovation we added in 2016 or 2019, and I think that there's a lot of value in having those meetings prior to application so that the neighborhood can provide that insight into the topography, into the drainage, into the circulation patterns in the neighborhood, well before an application is fully designed. And then the second one is that there's a recommendation for the mailers, the public notice boards and the public notice mailers, to push those responsibilities off on the applicant rather than on the department. I think that can create some of its own problems, problems that I've experienced in other jurisdictions. So I don't actually think we should do that one either, but nearly all the rest of them I'm very supportive of. With respect to the FTEs that we may need, it seems to me we may need FTEs in Public Works as well as in Planning, and FTEs that are added in Planning can also help support code enforcement and other aspects of Planning's workload that aren't specifically the permit process. And so I hope we don't shortchange ourselves too much when we're trying to put together, you know, how many additional staff might we need in order to implement this new process, because we're doing more than we have done before, and we are doing it in a more formal way and a more considered way, and so that may very well require staff. And from applicants I've spoken to, they do not care with some upper limit as to how much the applicant... as to how much the application costs, they just want it processed in a timely manner. So there may be a funding stream accessible to us to make sure that we can cover those costs. But so long as we are delivering the performance, I think that people expect. So thank you again, good job, everybody, and especially to Matrix for putting this together. I was impressed.
Mayor Miller. Mr. McDougal.
Yeah, reiterate the thank you to the Matrix group, as well as to staff, for engaging in this process. I think this is really positive, really productive. And I'm actually looking at, there's a large table on page 33, 34, I think. And that table appears to be, like, that is the problem to solve, right? That's the average number of days to process various permits for various classifications. And I'm wondering, like, I love the table of recommendations, and you've highlighted in light blue the ones you're going to pursue. Are there specific line items, like goals or targets over? And I know, I recognize this is a complex project, and I'm definitely out of my depth in the type of project that it is. But are there targets you're looking to achieve as it relates to the table on 33, 34, for reduction of those kinds of times over, say, the next 24 months? Is that a part of this process, or at least maybe coming as part of this process?
So I don't know what, this is on page 33 and 34, but I would assume it's similar to what we're going to be receiving and reporting out of the software. So it is going to take us a little bit to get that up and going, and probably to really kind of hone in, what is the right amount of time that a certain permit type would take? And then we expect either quarterly, or, you know, every six months, or whatever. We haven't really quite decided which reporting period it'll be, but we will set up, hopefully, SMARC of is capable of this, to set up a report that we'd be, you guys could look at it too, just to kind of see, I used to receive those when I was a council member as well, that you just kind of see, like, how many are in queue, how many are permitted, how many are, you know, closing out, and all that kind of stuff, just so you can kind of see when we have the ebb and flow of development in the community as well. But you also see, like, how are we doing, are we meeting our goals? You know, I think it's not something we're going to hide from the public. It's a, you know, those are our targets, and that we're going to try to achieve those.
Okay, great, yeah, thank you.
You guessed correctly, sorry. It was the applicant permit that they were approved in the types of the permit, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so as far as those timelines, we want to fix our process, and then we can start figuring out, okay, now that we're doing it right, how long is it taking us to do it? And work from there to determine what an appropriate time would be for each permit type to be reviewed.
Cool, yeah, that makes perfect sense. And I was just kind of looking at it, like, the very first line item is wireless service facility type. Like, you know, maybe that one's not a tremendous priority, but the very, the second one in line is apartments, five or more units, and that's the second longest permit sort of time duration. And like, that's one that I think probably a number of us would be interested in seeing, you know, drop significantly, once all is said and done, so, but thank you.
Other questions, comments, council?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Thanks very much for the report. I certainly learned a lot. I'm a little bit out of my depth here when it comes to planning as well. But one thing that I was very excited to hear is that there seems to be a definite buy-in from staff. Because I think that any time that you're going to make any kind of pretty significant change, having staff buy-in and getting people excited and on board about it is really half the battle. We have some great folks in our planning department, so if they're excited about it, I'm also excited about it. I do have a question in regards to kind of like how we are going to track this. I assume that the planning committee will probably get pretty regular readouts of progress of some kind. Is that, I'm just curious if there's a way that, like, I agree with Ms. Moulton, it's nice to...
I wasn't envisioning that we would be...
So how will we hear about, I guess then my question would be, how will we hear about progress? And if it's working?
So that is one of the recommendations, and then we would, there's multiple ways. One is, we could build into SMARC of, you could go and check anytime. And that's ultimate goal, is to have SMARC of be reportable, so anybody can go and see what the lineup looks like of timelines, and how many permits just in that, in the customer's side of the portal. Otherwise, as Andy was pointing out, we're envisioning, like, a quarterly or twice a year presentation to council, you know, whether it's, you know, just a memo in the packet, or it's the short presentation, but something giving feedback to council, so you can see what that timeline's like. And that's what the management team will be working on. I apologize, that is towards the backend of the system.
Totally fine, thank you.
Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. I really appreciate this report. I'm sort of echoing what my fellow council members have already said. But I feel that, given where we are as a city in this process, I think that it's crucial that we have measurements, that we can sort of check the benchmarks. And I think that that will be what we'll need to see in order to be hopeful. I mean, in talking to many of the builders, realtors, you know, it's been a difficult time. And as far as that, revenues for the city itself. So what I'm looking for are those benchmarks. I love the fact that there is a plan in place, and that we're working on the highest priorities to make sure that those things and those bottlenecks are being addressed. I would love, though, the follow-up, because again, one of the things I personally would be looking for are those benchmarks. And I think that the public and the whole council would benefit as we achieve each of those steps that we are outlining, that are necessary in order to improve this process. I'm looking forward to that. But where we are right now, it's obviously, I'm just very hopeful that we can turn this around. And I have utter confidence in the staff and the team, I really do. I'm just looking for those benchmarks, such that we can assess whether those strategies are working or not working for us. Thank you.
You know, to that point, when we started this process, we were down staff members. And it's been a year since we hired our associate planner, Anna, and she's doing a great job. And we've worked through a lot of our backlog. Not saying that, you know, permits are flying through, we still have process improvements that we need to do, but we do not, you know, we've implemented small changes along the way, you know, some of them as a result of the Matrix study, that it's hard to measure exactly their impact. But what we can say is, you know, the permitting timelines are not as bad as they were, but we don't have benchmarks yet. Like, we don't, we haven't created reports to figure out exactly how long it should take, or how long, or how, exactly how far behind we are, or any of that yet.
Mayor Blah.
Ms. Cleve McGrath.
Thank you. So I would just like to say, it has been almost a year since we started this process. And whenever we have consultants come and kind of do a report, it can vary whether or not it's really tailored to what we need, what we're asking for. And I have to say that the Matrix report was quite thorough. I was pleasantly surprised. I think it went into a lot of detail. And I think that's due to the fact that staff and stakeholders were willing to put the time in to share what is actually happening when it comes to the permitting process. So I just want to say, like, I want to say thank you, guys, for working on this, for working together. I think that this is a really important baseline, that prior to the last couple of years, we just kind of had enough folks working, that there was a system, that no one, that was kind of in place, but not formalized. And as we move forward with our new development regulations, and hearing more about the importance of housing by right, we need to make sure that we formalize and have, formalize the process, that we have consistency when it comes to applicants, when it comes to neighbors, when it comes to the community, and that we have timeliness. So, because that's what really builds confidence with the public, that when a project comes forward, that they, whoever is the applicant, whoever is looking to do something, knows that they will get a fair, timely review and response, whether or not it's someone who goes and does development multiple times over 10 years, or someone who wants to put in an ADU, right? We need to make sure that, or, for example, someone who wants to start a dog business, grooming business downtown, right? Like, we need to make sure that we are able to be responsive, and consistent, and clear with all of our citizens. And so being able to formalize even as simple as some of these forms will be helpful, not just to our community, but also to staff. So thank you, I think this is really good. I also think this is a, as we've talked about, council procedures moving forward, would be a great thing to come back six months from now and do a roundtable discussion when we're starting to do these, whatever they're called now, what are we calling them now? Committee of the whole, whatever, you know. I think this is an opportunity for a better education, and have some feedback about what's working and what's not working. And I think that the public would like to know how it's going to. This is a huge job, but I do really appreciate the work that Matrix did, and the work that you guys have done on this. And it's really what needs to happen, needed to happen now, so that we can have success in the future. So, well done, you guys.
All right, anybody else? Well, again, I'd like to, one more time, thank Matrix. I know from the first meeting that I had with the team, it was, it's really challenging when you know you've got to air your dirty laundry, and do what I call unblinking self-assessment of our process. And Matrix was right there with us, and allowed us to be very candid, and again, I think is a very candid report. And we appreciate that we'll be able to move forward with the information that they've helped us provide. So thank you, Allison, and your team.
Thank you. Yeah, really appreciate the feedback, and thanks, John and Andy, and we'll be in touch. We'll still be available to you all, of course.
Great, thank you so much. All right, appreciate it.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. We are on to item 6B, this is a capital facilities plan. This is Public Works, and this is a discussion item. And the whole Public Works team is here, and the finance team is here. All right, Mr. Hoagland, are you kicking this off, or Ms. Peck?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, members of the audience. So I wanted to start out looking at revenues. Real briefly, and some of this material should look familiar. When Public Works brought the capital plan to council a few weeks ago, we had some of these revenue projections included. Wanted to revisit these. So to begin with, I wanted to show you the REIT projections that we have, real estate excise tax, one of our most important revenue streams for Public Works' construction projects. And this is still, you know, in a number of places here. You'll see the reference to REIT 1 and REIT 2, that'll become less important in the future. But for the current data that we have, we're still showing those as separate revenue streams. So this top corner right here, to begin with, this is the current resources that we have for real estate excise tax. As of last week, September 17th, we had a total of 4.3 million in cash. So at this point, we have not made any transfers out of REIT to Public Works or Parks for any of those projects that qualify for the REIT funding that we had scheduled. This is all residing in the REIT fund right now. So 4.3 million, based on what we've collected so far this year in historical averages, we expect to collect another 428,000. This $3 million number here, this is what we expect to either spend this year, or we need to encumber to spend next year for projects that were budgeted in 2025, will not be completed this year, and will roll into '26. And those are all represented right here in the green shading and the yellow shading. So the green shading are the projects budgeted this year that we expect to complete, and the yellow shading is for those projects that we are expecting to roll into 2026. The total sum of those three columns comes to $3 million, that's where this comes from. Up here, this $3 million in expense and encumbered money, which gives us a projected year-end balance of REIT of 1.8 million.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
If we could back up one. So we're just seeing this, because this one isn't in our packet, but the $3 million is the total of the projects listed in that 2025 chart there?
Yes, right here, this, the collection of these three columns, right here.
So we, can you move the anachordis cross? Oh, all right, nothing behind it. So what is the yellow, roll to 2026?
That's correct, so...
Okay, so isn't it 1.5 million, then, that is encumbered?
It's the sum of these three projects, the 320,000, the 1.5, and the 90,000.
1.9, so...
Yeah.
So 3 million is the list of all these projects, but those three, which are two of the 3 million, are going to 2026?
Yes, correct.
So should encumbered over here just read 1 million?
Over here?
Technically, it's encumbered, but you're really only expecting to spend 1 million?
That's right. We're expecting to spend 1 million and carry over 2, roughly, and that's...
So then our year-end estimated balance is quite a bit higher than the 1.8 you show there?
Yes, for sure. So our estimated, estimated actual cash at year-end is going to be closer to, you know...
3.8?
Three, 3.8.
Okay.
But I'm, what I'm trying to show is what we have, the expected REIT that will be available to budget for 2026, for new 2026 projects. So this 3 million, part of this will be spent in the green shaded projects, and then part of it will be encumbered for these yellow shaded projects. Those are budgeted in 2025, but we're not expecting to finish those in 2025.
But we are also going to show them in the 2026 CFP, right?
Yeah, it's a good, that's a good point. So I, yeah, good point. You've identified one of the weaknesses of my charts here, so looking...
Sorry.
It's one of the number-one challenges, though, we have when major projects roll over to the year. We've seen this with a number of major projects, so it does make accounting somewhat challenging.
Yeah, so this, in 2026, so looking at this collection of requests, at the bottom of this chart, starting in '26, there's a total of 4.11, '27, a total of 4.56. In 2026, you're right, we should remove 1.95 out of that balance, which would bring it to 2.1. So looking at the projected, looking at the projected REIT balances, we're expecting to effectively end the year 1.8, if we consider this, if we consider this 3 million to be encumbered and spent, starting the year in '26 with this 1.8 million. And this 4.1 million, consider that to be 2.1. So... So, we have 2.1 in requests and 3.3 in funding. So, I think you can kind of see the, you can kind of see the point here, even making that adjustment, looking out, we're going to be out of money halfway through fiscal year '27. So, I was trying to set the stage for what we're going to show you tonight in terms of requests for REIT. So, looking out through our CFP timeframe, this 4.1 million is what we have in the 2026 REIT request, 4.5 million for REIT request in '27, 3.7 in '28, 5.2 and 3.2. So, please, please let me know if you have questions, because I'm going to move on to utility revenues here in a minute.
Mr. McDougal, please.
Is, 2026 is 2.1 million, even though it says 4.1 million, right?
Yeah, that's, yeah, right? It's a little bit apples and oranges here, yeah.
Okay, but the other numbers are real, but there's also the potential for projects to slide into the following year, so all of the numbers can be sliding a bit because of multi-year timelines.
Yeah, and they certainly will. This, you know, everything, everything being equal...
Okay, we'll let you keep going.
Okay.
Mayor, Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters.
I think some of the difficulty with this page is that in your projected spend, at the bottom, you've got yearly figures, but at the, in the top half of the chart, you're just, you just keep accumulating more REIT, and you never deduct any of the spend.
Yeah, that's right. So, when I, when I put this chart together in my work file, everything was red. It was hard to look at because we went, because we go red so quickly. So, I took, I took those out so that we could talk about what the projected REIT balances were going to be against the requested use by transportation and operations.
Okay.
Okay, this is, I'm going to move on to water here. So, this, this chart, these next series of charts will look familiar. This is what you saw earlier, a few weeks ago, when you were looking at the water, the Water Capital Plan. This shows the estimated request. Sorry, the, so, the brown, the brown bar being operations expense, and the blue bar being capital expense, the green is what our projected revenues are. So, following the red line for the required revenue for those revenue streams, or for those expenditure streams, you can see they're relatively equitable, for the most part. We have a projection for water, that water revenues, projected water revenues, will pay for projected water expenses. Going back a few weeks, when Mr. Rayum presented the Water Capital Plan, we went through this. Is this, is this ringing a bell? This is the storm sewer. So, going from water, the storm sewer, the same setup, green is projected revenues, this gray bar on the bottom is projected operating expense, and the blue bar is projected capital expense. The red being the total requirement cash flow per year. And these are the assumptions, operating expenses will grow at 4%, revenues will grow at 3% annually. So, this, again, this is still the storm sewer. So, the analysis that we did, looking at existing revenues, considering the 3% expected revenue increase, if we wanted to generate additional revenues for the storm utility, we looked at a $5 per month rate change. So, implementing a $5 per ERU rate change would generate roughly half a million dollars per year in additional revenue. This is back up to, back up to the expenditure side of the storm fund. Looking at 2026, you can see the, based on the current, current capital plan of 1.3, 1.1 million in capital request for 2026, that's a little more than what we have a shortfall estimated of. So, we implemented, trying to make this make sense, so a $5 per ERU rate change was implemented, you could roughly make up half of that. So, instead of the entire 1.1 million in capital request being funded, you could select half of that, based on our analysis for additional revenues from a $5 per ERU rate Okay, wastewater, similar situation, 2025, we have the, the Outfall Project, it's an outlier, and we have grant funding for that. Looking forward into 2026, estimated operating of 9.5 million, estimated capital based on the current CIP of 6.3 million, and you can see that shortfall out through the CFP timeframe. So, still staying in sewer, a 6% rate increase against what we currently have, what, against our current rates, would again generate about half a million dollars in additional revenue per year. So, short of the additional revenue that we would need to do all of the projects identified, but it would give a little more cash flow to be able to identify those projects most in need, to start working on those, those projects. So, a 6% again works out to, for the sewer, sewer utility, about $5 per month as well. Would love to entertain any questions the council might have, Mayor Miller?
Yeah, and I think what might help is, if you go back to the blue, the bar charts, Steve, so that 6.36 million, if you go look at the CFP that you were in your packet, that 6.36 billion lines up with what is in there as far as the planned offered expenses in 2026?
Yep, that's right.
So, sorry, Mr. Fantini.
No, thank you. So, obviously, it seems like we have some gaps, some funding gaps, and so I'm just curious, are we, are we kind of recommending that we impose those additional fees? Like, are we just saying this is one option of how to get there, or is that kind of like a recommendation?
So, what we wanted to do tonight was bring you some options. You saw this for the first time a few weeks ago. I know that was a shock at that time, it's probably still a shock, but there are some decisions that council is going to need to make. You can say, "We're not doing anything, all of this gets kicked down the road." You can implement 6% to give you half a million dollars, Mr. Rayum and his crew get an additional half a million dollars. You can select something more than that if you want to try and make more progress, but we wanted you to see what the impact of that was. So, in the wastewater utility, 6% works out to about $5 per month, per ratepayer, gives you about a half a million dollars more in cash flow.
And just, just kind of a follow-up to that, I'm sure everybody in this room knows that, but one thing that I learned was, of course, that if we do increase those rates, obviously, the money that we bring in can only be used for water projects, sewer projects, right? It's a restricted fund?
Yeah, that's correct. That's, the utilities each have their own accounting fund, and those funds can only be used within that utility. So, when you pay your utility bill, there's four different, four different lines on the utility bill, unless you have fiber, then there's five organics, I guess, but you get the point. So, water charges go into the water fund, sewer charges go into the sewer fund, and they can only be used for that utility.
Thank you.
So, I think you wanted to set the stage with this backdrop, and then we're going to go through the Capital Facilities Plan?
Yeah, that's right.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
I guess we should also mention that, this is on the revenue side, and thank you for showing us the revenue side and the projections versus the sum of the expenditures, but the basis for the expenditures are mostly round numbers, right? I mean, we don't know what the cost of each of those projects is going to be, yet. We have estimates, we have, maybe some estimates are better than others, but I think we would be remiss to not mention, you know, revenue enhancements are one option, constraining expenses is another, and that might be something that we need to look at.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because we're already raising rates with inflation.
That's correct. So, yeah, that's exactly right. So, our inflation marker we use, I believe, runs through the end of October, and then that CPI, that CPI amount that's released by the BLS, Bureau of Labor Statistics, gets incorporated into the January 1st rate changes for the utilities. So, what we're talking about here would be anything on top of that. And you're exactly right, you could choose to not change rates and continue to work on these capital projects, but reduce expenditures elsewhere. I mean, there are, you know, a number of options at your disposal, but we do have a budget revenue hearing coming up on October 6th, first meeting in October. So, I wanted to get this in front of council to start that conversation, because any changes would have to be part of that public hearing. So, would like to go back to the water utility, theoretically, starting with the easiest one, the revenue projections aren't really out of bed when we look at the CIP request in the water utility. So, in your packet, the summary page, just like we did for the governmental funds, I'd like to just work through the summary page, go through each of the 2026 projects that are identified, make sure council has any questions answered, and we'll go from there. To begin with, Water Treatment Plant Maintenance Storage Building, that project would schedule, would start next year in 2026 at 300,000, and then run for the next two years, 700,027, 200,028. Oak Harbor Pass Lake, 10-inch water line, that project has been in the CFP. Previously, we have a better estimate now on what that estimated cost is, so we're looking at $5 million in 2026, 1.2 million the following year to wrap up in 2027.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hoagland. The Oak Harbor water line, this is, there are two, right? And they're both in not, oh, yeah, thanks, Mr. Rayum, they're not in good repair, from my understanding. Do we have any expectation that Oak Harbor is going to help pay for any of this?
Yeah, so, we work these projects that we have in the CFP into the water rates. The Oak Harbor line is split between the City of Oak Harbor and the City of Anacortes, we're the only two users of those water lines, so we split the cost of those projects based on consumption.
Okay, so, we're splitting that, that's good news, and, okay, and I think they're both in disrepair, or one's okay, or what's the scoop?
So, one of the lines is owned and operated by the City of Anacortes, the other line is owned and operated by Oak Harbor. We don't own two lines, we just own the one line.
Okay.
And that one line is the one we split costs with. So, Oak Harbor pays 100% of the line they own, we split the cost with Oak Harbor of the one we own.
Okay, great, thanks.
So, Mayor Miller?
Ms. Glue-McGrath?
I feel like we've had this conversation before, but remind me, out of the 5 million, and then the 1.2 million, the water line, correct, are, is that our portion, or do we have reserves collected from Oak Harbor to cover half of that amount?
So, it's our pipe, yeah. I don't know what the percentage of ownership is, but your question is what?
I guess my question is, do we have any reserves collected to cover the cost of that 6.2 million dollar, two-year project?
Yes, so, that, as I mentioned, that project has been in the CFP at a lower amount, and we have, we have collected about $3 million from Oak Harbor that would go towards that line.
Okay, I guess that's, and I get, that doesn't show up on the, on the kind of summary page, which makes it harder to, I guess, as a council member who doesn't talk about this on a daily basis, right? Like, when we look at the doom and gloom projections of the REIT 1 and 2, you know, having, understanding that we do have some reserves, or some collected for these projects helps make me feel a little bit better. I wish there was a way that we could articulate that, even if it's only half is covered, that makes me kind of feel like we're, we need to kind of piece it all together. So, I don't know if there's a way to include that, or if you have any suggestions?
So, just kind of to clarify, the utilities, those projects in the utilities are only paid by ratepayers. So, when you look at the sources, whether it's out of cash reserves, or, you know, bond issue, we always list it as rates, you know, as the sources to pay for the project being as rates, because ultimately, that's the only place, shouldn't say only place, once in a while, we'll get a grant, like the Outfall Project got a grant, Storm, once in a while, we get grants, but for the most part, it's the ratepayers that pay for all of that project.
Which, yeah.
Yeah, so, in this case, we have about 3 million in the bank from Oak Harbor, and the rest, but the rest of that would be made up with revenues from ratepayers.
Which makes sense, but also, if we don't have the cash on hand, then are we using REIT for that? No, we're going to, we're able to just do it completely using ratepayer funds.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton.
Just one tiny more point about that, like, if we had this in description or justification, kind of like some of the other projects were updated since the facilities condition analysis to say, for example, the Depot Plaza building that we'll get to, $200,000 is going to be to replace the roof in fascia. Like, that would be like, really, just a nice little booster to have here, like, oh, yeah, we have $3 million from Oak Harbor. It just, it would just be helpful to us to know, and I think the public too, when you look at a number of that size.
Mayor Miller?
Mayor Miller? Mr. Walters, and then Mr. McDougal.
Yeah, I think a narrative description of the use of funds, or the grant sources, or whatever, would be frequently useful on these projects. But also, one point of clarification, we are never proposing to use REIT for a utility-funded project.
That's correct, yeah. And it's a point well-taken. I guess it's easy to kind of get used to looking at these projects when you deal with it every day, I apologize for that. The water system is a little bit complex, we have a number of regional customers, and we have our water system broken up into several re- customers, and we have our water system broken up into several regions, and that's how we allocate those costs, um, and, yeah, it's, it's a good point.
And sometimes our regional customers aren't always happy with, with how we set the rates and, and how we spend that, so I've spent some time talking to Oak Harbor, particularly about these water lines, so there's been, we, we, I don't know off the top of my head, but there's a percentage of ownership, and, and we've worked these rates backwards and forward, and yes, we have collected money to do this repair, and it's a redundant system to provide water to Oak Harbor, some owned by us, uh, line, and some owned by Oak Harbor. Uh, Mr. McDougal, you were next.
Yeah, I was, well, I think I got confused by what you were showing earlier, which is basically wastewater and storm, this actually is not, like, this project here is not either of those, so it's not actually part of that $6 million a year gap that we're seeing in wastewater. So the 3 million that is not shown on here but is in the bank, it's nothing to do with that $6 million storm gap.
That's correct, yeah, so.
Is there a separate equivalent slide that maybe we saw a couple weeks ago for just regular water?
So the, the water utility, when we presented this slide a few weeks back?
Yeah.
What the statement was, is the water utility currently has enough reserves in capital, um, and that combined with their outlook for their current rates can pay for everything that you're seeing in their particular capital facilities plan.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Of course.
Contact switching here, so.
Yeah, and, and water, we think about regional, a regional system, and we think about our retail system, our internal system, so, just a reminder there. All right, Mr. Hoagland, please proceed.
Pipeline replacements at 1.7 million, so, back to what Mayor Miller just, uh, just described, um, the pipeline replacements are pipelines that reside within the city system, so we have a regional system that all of our wholesale customers share in, which is primarily the treatment plant and the 36-inch transmission lines that come across the valley. The Oak Harbor line runs from Sharp's Corner down to the bridge, we share that with Oak Harbor, there's a refinery system that runs, lines that run out to the refinery, this pipeline replacement is just within the city of Anacortes, that's, so, that cost is built into the rates that we charge our city of Anacortes rate, ratepayers, that generate that revenue every year to do those pipeline replacements.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
For this particular project, we're inflating the expected cost by more than half over six years, from 1.7 million to 2.8. That's greater than the rate of inflation, I hope. That's what's that?
Yeah, microphone, Mr.
We're anticipating some pretty good inflation, then?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, that's, that's an increase for the amount of water lines that need to be replaced, and inflation, cost of the projects.
Not exclusively inflation?
I'm sorry?
Not exclusively inflation, we're also picking up the pace on water line replacement in this projection?
We are, yes.
Okay, okay, good, thank you. And that's, uh, assumedly informed by the water system plan?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
The next project down is 29th Street Reservoir, so that's another one that is, another project that's paid for exclusively by the city of Anacortes ratepayers, 2 million next year, 2 million the following year, 2027, and these projects have been in, at least in our long-term CIP, we've been, um, expecting these projects, so we have incorporated these into the existing, the existing rates, so we do have some cash set aside for these, these projects. I guess I'm trying to say we don't need to do a rate increase to pay for these projects.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Be that as it may, when we did the 3 million gallon water tank on Whistle Lake Road, we got a drinking water revolving fund loan of like, less than 1%, um, which was less even than inflation at the time, we're kind of making money by getting the loan, even, uh, is there any chance for that, for these bigger projects in our retail system?
It's a great question, I haven't looked into that, but I, it's definitely worth looking into, it's a good point.
Because even where we, even where we have currently enough revenue, I mean, it's still worth saving some money if we, if we can, even to put aside for the next unexpected project.
No, yeah, absolutely, if we can get a 1% loan, and we're making 3% on our investments, it's, makes sense. Next project down is Telegraph Slough for 300,000 next year. Uh, Cathodic Protection Deep Well, 140,000 next year in 2026, replace the Zeticizer for 120,000, pump number one inverter at 350, pipe arch at 550,000 next year, PRV rebuild at 120,000, water treatment plant repair projects that would be overseen by the facilities department at 535,000, lead and copper laterals at 50,000, turbidity assessment at 150,000, and then 90,000 first, Winomish Slough 36-inch line, which would carry over into the following year at 700,000.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Um, on the... The VFD inverter, the pump number one inverter project, that particular project has a justification that we propose being proactive in replacing this VFD inverter before it fails, pump number four failed in 2024 and took 24 weeks to get the inverter, pumps of the same age, I think that's precisely the kind of thing we look for in the justification box, I think.
That is correct.
Yeah, I think that that's great information for us to have.
Um, so council, that's what we have lined up, 2026 in the water utility, I'm happy to continue through 2027, and to get the full complement of the, of the CFP. If it's, if this works for council, I would just continue with the line 18, the West March Point project, 2027, we'd start that project at 2 million, that would carry over into 2028 with an additional $8 million. That's, so that's, that's in the area that we call the refinery segment of the water utility, that's primarily the refineries that, and again, we allocate those costs based on consumption, city of Anacortes system, or, you know, the city's retail system, and the refiners are the only ones that use those two systems, they use the vast majority, over 90% of that, but that is how the, the split would work on that project.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
This is another good example of a good justification, the full cost will be paid by the refineries by an increase incorporated into the three-year refinery rates, so it's really helpful that, that that's there, so thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
I also think this is a good example of how, you know, here's a $10 million project, assuming you're doing it all in one year, you have to show it in the budget, if you weren't doing the project, the annual city budget would be $10 million smaller, but it's not like we're spending $10 million more taxpayer money, because somebody else is paying for it.
Mayor, can I point something out about this project? So, um, in last year's C, uh, capital facilities plan, we estimated this project at $4 million, uh, so we've done quite a bit of engineering to this point, and I, I just want to let you know, that's why we are stopping engineering, and we are waiting to let the, because we have a three-year horizon for the refineries to pay their capital facilities cost, so we need to stop and collect more funds from them before proceeding again, I just kind of wanted to point that out, if you're like, I thought this thing was gonna be done this year, it's, that's what's happened, uh, we got to about 60% design, and we hit the brakes, because it was like, oh, we are way over the estimated, the estimate that was in your last CFP. The other thing, too, to point out, because this is gonna come up in the transportation section, there's also a bike trail that's included in this project, um, because of the difficulties in the situation with the coastline right there, it's turning out to be, it was a quarter million dollar project in your CFP, we're looking at 2 million. So I've, I've reached the state and to say, hey, thanks for the quarter million, uh, but it's actually 2 million, and I'm trying to see if they, what they come back with, that's at a very expensive bike lane, uh, so we're trying to kind of re-figure, like, once we have a little more information about what this, where the state's at, and contributing more money to the bike lane portion of the project, uh, then we'll, then we'll come back to council and let you guys know what kind of, where we're at, but 2 million dollars for that bike lane is a horrendous amount of money, instead of just having a, a wide shoulder, so, I, I just kind of want to throw that out there, because this is gonna come up twice tonight, and I just kind of want to give you a little background on, on why it's been pushed out.
Uh, continuing down through 2020, 2027, South Fidalgo Island Pipeline Replacement Program of 710,000, the Rotork Replacement Program at 100,000 per year, filter railing platform and ladders at 150,000. Then moving into the 2028 timeframe, Skyline Reservoir Rebuild Project, starting in 2028 at 2 million, that would continue into 2029 with an additional 1.7 million, reconfiguring the valves at Whistle Lake Road at 594,000, 2028. Then dropping into the 2029 time, timeframe, Campbell Lake Fish Passage Relocation, starting at 75,000 in 2029, 2030 an additional half million, and then the Blue Heron Pump Station, it's 200,000 in 2029, 2 and 1/2 million and 30, an additional million in 2031.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
The previous project there, the Campbell Lake Fish Passage Relocation, uh, is that in any way holding up the Campbell Lake Road SR20 Roundabout project?
No, it's not, it's the, so it's a fish, the state is required Department of Transportation to replace, uh, fish culverts with fish passable culverts. That project is kind of on their timeline, and they just keep kicking that one down the, the road, the project in your, in the water CFP is to move the pipe, the sewer, the, sorry, the water pipe out of the way of the, the box culvert, basically going.
So we're not holding them up in any way?
Not at all.
Okay. And, the reason I ask, is we've been talking about that Campbell Lake Road SR20 Roundabout for the last, forever, and, uh, everybody seems to agree, yeah, we should do it, but, uh, not we, because it's not our jurisdiction, but Washdott should do it, but it doesn't seem to get done, so.
Uh, that is about it for water, the very bottom two items, Hummingbird Lane rezoning and point pipe reconfiguration out in the 2031 timeframe at 152,000 and 255,000. Council, any additional questions in the water utility CFP?
Yeah, and this one's the good news story, by the way, uh, between our regional partners and the rates that council has set already for our retail partners, that we think we can cover, with the exception of a, the one that Mr. Ray M. just mentioned, but, all right. Questions on the water, before we move off the water system?
Okay, the next section is operations, facilities. So the total here, just wanted to point out, total of 1.9, 1.9 million, and when you drop down to the funding sources, 1.458 of that is, uh, is a REIT request, with 450,000 that would come out of, uh, user fees that would be associated with utility work. So to begin with, uh, emergent repairs at 275, ops repair projects at 500,000, parks at 200,000, library 55,000, PD repair projects at 323,000, seagull mitigation is planning to continue next year at 35,000, city hall repairs at 240, electrical panel study that would be 150,000 a year, each year of the six-year CFP, equipment trailer of 30,000, and equipment heated storage facility of 100,000.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters, then Ms. Moulton?
So these projects are largely proposing the use of REIT, and as you showed us at the beginning, we just don't have enough, so how are we to prioritize them?
So what we have been talking about internally is, we have a limited amount of REIT, you can see the projects that we have, um, what we were talking about proposing is identifying an amount of REIT that would be allocated towards the ops budget, 800,000 perhaps, and they have this list of projects that they would start working on next year, working through the list of projects, knowing that they had 800,000 of REIT budget. If they were to get through the entire 800,000, we would reconvene, reconcile, come back to council, perhaps for a budget amendment, but at that point, we would stop and see where we were at, and go, and essentially go from there. We know we don't have enough money to fund the whole 1.9, but we can allocate some amount of REIT to operations and let them start working their project list.
Nothing outside of the CFP, of course, but in a, in a amount that, when you run out, these are the priorities, and you stop there, and Ms. Moulton was next, I think.
My question was essentially the same about where the, how this related to our overall REIT picture, and then, um, so, I'm sorry, so you said that there would be a certain amount allocated, and then projects would be prioritized through 2026?
That's correct, so when we bring back the operating budget, we'll have, instead of identifying some number of projects and funding all of those, we'll have an amount of REIT that we'll allocate towards the facility's budget, and they will use that to start working through their project list.
Okay, so, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, they, so they would work through their, it would be up to them then to prioritize that project list, and once they reach the end of their budget, they would stop, and then we would reconvene to see if it made sense to come back to council, if there was some additional REIT available to do a budget amendment to continue those projects, or if they would just be done at that point for the year.
So that prioritization, I imagine, is gonna be a pretty difficult task, and is that something that council input would be sought for, or how, how will that work, the prioritization?
So we are prepared to provide you the, like, this is number one through nine projects, or whatever it is for facilities, um, the, what we presented tonight, uh, for the operations capital facilities, uh, budget, is what we thought we could handle, like a maximum of what we could handle, because there's more, according to the, to the condition, facilities condition assessment, there's, there's more than we could handle with our, our staffing, so, what I asked the staff to do is come forward with a list of things that you think you can accomplish, now, we can accomplish more than we can afford.
Sure.
When you look at REIT, uh, you know, we get it, we're not the only thing in town, uh, so, or, we're not the only pressure on REIT, and, and so, um, what I really like about what finance came up with is, is a way for us to, to kind of illustrate to you, this is what we could get done if we had the money, but we know we don't have the money. So in the operating budget, when it becomes actual live amount of money, that will be kind of right-sized by finance, and we will work towards, uh, you know, achieving, we'll definitely be able to spend the 800,000 out of the 1.9, right, because I thought we could, our, our management team feels that we could have spent 1.9 million on facilities, but, um, but we don't have that kind of money, so, so we're gonna try to balance the facilities' needs with other needs that, that depend on REIT, um, and in the meantime, it'll be more communication with council, I would say, than the budgeting process, where we're, you're, you're giving us an allowance, basically, and we're gonna try to burn through that and come back to you and say, okay, and he'll just say, you don't have any more REIT to allocate, so forget it, or you, you might have some more, and what do you want to use it to, what do you want to allocate it to, uh, this'll be kind of the same story with transportation projects, as well, there's a couple of parks projects that are REIT-dependent, so, um, we're trying to find a creative way to kind of show you what we think we can accomplish, at the same time, balance that with what we think we can afford.
And one thing we're going to do too is, as we do quarterly budget amendments, we're actually going to put together a more formal quarterly budget review process where we'll be able to come to council and show where we had allocated REIT, and we'll be able to see who has spent it and who has not. And what we'll then be able to do is have a discussion around reallocating where folks are not meeting the commitments for one reason or another and a project hasn't happened. So that way, we can make more informed decisions and, and try to manage the money and allocate it where, where we can see momentum happen.
Okay, that sounds great. Yeah, I still have a question even within that framework of like what will be prioritized and how.
So I guess, so Andy, do you want to share kind of what you've done with facilities or will, around what you think are maybe your top four?
Are you prepared, Will, for that? We've, we've certainly looked at what our top priorities are, and we have a small list we've started. But I think what we could probably do is in the operating budget, budget detail, we could list out our projects in priority for the full amount of money we, we requested. And that way, we can just kind of check those boxes with on the list when we start doing contracts and we'll know where that money's going at that point. But I mean, certainly the, the team in facilities can look at the projects and see whether paint repair is more desperate needed than a furnace replacement, things like that. Is it easy for our staff to take a look at and prioritize?
That would be great, just to kind of see that as it goes along, as it progresses. I think that would be helpful to us and the public. Thank you.
So one cautionary tale, though, keep in mind that the AC unit on the, like, the police station is not, not working right now. Well, that just went from number nine on the list to number one, you know? So that, those things can, can and will happen with facilities. You know, we, we're trying to predict better about how long we have till we need to replace stuff. But, but yeah, just kind of keep that in mind. We'll, no problem, we get to show you which ones we would, if we had to pick which ones we think need to be done first, we'll tell you. But, and then stuff happens.
Which is informed by the facilities assessment, you know? It's not like they're just making this stuff up, as council knows.
Well, absolutely. And I see that, you know, $275,000 is for emergent repair. So obviously, things change. I just think it's great to have it sort of be a, kind of a continuing conversation with periodic updates, so we in the public know, know what's happening. Thanks.
I think Mr. Walters.
Some of these projects, so for instance, library repair projects lists elements that you plan to pursue, low voltage lighting system replacement at 55K. But it only lists that one, and then it has 50K for the following five years as well. I, I think that that might get at what Ms. Moulton was talking about, and certainly what I would be interested in too is, you know, what, how do those projects break down over time? For the parks repair projects, there's a depot fascia and roof replacement at 200K. And historically, we have really prioritized roof replacements for obvious reasons, similarly the same reason you have. And so we would want to prioritize that again, assumedly, but, but then what after that? What about the next five years? And I guess, I think it's fine to say, you know, it's just a projection of what we expect things will cost over the following five years. But if there are choices, because there are projects that we've already identified, I think we might want to participate in selecting those choices.
So we got our facility condition assessment back late, and we didn't have time to go out and plan every year, but we will, by next year, CFP have all those years planned out. We have all the information available to us. So we can prioritize all six years of the CFP with actual projects.
Okay, thank you.
Now, that will be quite a lofty, or a pretty deep description section. If that's what council wants, we could do that. But what we tried to do is this year, we tried to put in there what the projects are specifically for that, you know, facility.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Calum McGrath.
Yeah. I, I kind of like this approach, and I would also appreciate, as you said, about, once the operating budget comes out, the end of the year, that'll really kind of identify what those priority, those highest priority projects are. And I know this is kind of a, has been an ongoing discussion of, do you give certain projects, just kind of a line item across the board, $250,000 or not? So, and then are we using that money right? So I, I'm not really making sense here, but I appreciate when it comes to operations and the facilities and maintenance, saying, here's your chunk of change, whether it's 800,000 or whatever, and being able to prioritize your projects, knowing that I think we've done a really good, staff's done a really good job of, when a project comes up, if there is more things that we should accomplish as part of that project that we didn't know when we started out, because it's more cost-effective or time-effective to get that kind of additional components completed at that time. I want to make sure that we're still doing that. And, and I think that's something that we've had kind of debates on. Do you just give yourselves a, do, does council just give you a chunk of change and you do what you want, or do we need you to come back and talk about each, each component of it as it, as the project gets larger? So I'm interested in trying it this year, like doing that, the, the pot of money, use it all up, knowing that we'll get quarterly updates and kind of the high level priorities in the Ops, or I'm sorry, in the operations budget, and then going back for more. I know it's, it's kind of a push and pull of trying to figure out what makes the most sense, but I, I think this is a good, good direction to go.
I will say also that our facility condition assessment plan had an executive summary portion, which is now posted on our website. So it's available for each, you can see each facility and their top kind of priorities.
So that could be a really good hint of what your priorities are going to be in the operations budget? All right.
And then just one, I'm sorry, one, one final clarity on the, you know, if we, if we do, do the pooling of money, that money is strictly, I guess we'll say it's committed to those items that are on the facilities plan today. And if there was a divergence from that, that would need to come back as probably a CFP amendment.
Okay, that gets us through 2026, operations. Moving into 27, on this current CFP estimate, the City Hall Elevator is listed at 350,000, a new facility's vehicle at 50,000, new dumpster truck at 200,000. Moving into 28, repaving half of the facility at Ops, 400,000. Facilities expansion, or I'm sorry, the Ops facility expansion at 1.5 million. Additional vehicle, 60,000, EV chargers at 50,000. That gets us into 2029, replacing the Maritime Center roof at 100,000. And then way out in 2031, Fire Department Elevator at 350,000.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters.
On the Fire Department Elevator, the description specifically says, facilities needs direction on if we are going to modernize the current elevator. What direction do you require?
The elevator is currently out of service. It's red-ticked out of service.
And we seem to be getting along just fine without it?
Correct.
And that is the direction they received.
Exactly. So it can stay that way, as far as we're concerned. But if we're going to do anything different, we need direction on whether to replace the entire thing with the new system, or what that looks like moving forward.
And the reason for that is because it's the only one of this particular type, or the only one of two in the state?
Yeah, it's obsolete.
Where's the other one, dare I ask?
I think, is it Chamber?
What?
The Chamber.
The Chamber, okay. And is there something particularly bad about this type of elevator?
Two parts you cannot any longer obtain.
Ah, okay.
I think they've already obtained surplus parts in the past to keep it going, as long as they did.
So then, is the question, do we want to modernize it? Is it, do we want to replace it? Because it can't be-
Do you want to replace it?
-repaired?
Correct.
Okay.
Just to add to this conversation, because it's a public facility, the fire station technically does need to have an elevator in it. You can have a elevator that's out of commission or an elevator you repair, but you can't have an elevator you decommission.
So it's a waiting repair and replacement. And I've read the ADA rules backwards and forwards on that one.
All right, we ready to move on to Storm? All right.
So looking at 2026, Storm Line on Port Heavy Hall Route, 637,500, and 17th Street Pipe and Outfall Repair of 487,500. Total of 1.125 million for the year 2026. Dropping down, starting in 27, Systems Storm Restore and Upgrade at 285,000. That program continues out through the planning period. Outfall Evaluation and Rehab, 55,000. Again, that continues out through the CFP planning period. Ace of Hearts Creek Restoration at 280,000 in 2027, continues into 2028 with an additional 721,000.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. So I just have a question, and it says it will be eligible, this project will be eligible for required credit toward implementation in the next NPDES permit. What does that mean?
We have a requirement, it goes by population, we have a requirement to upgrade Stormwater Facilities. So this last, this permit one, we did R Avenue, D Avenue, and the Marion Way Pond gave us the credit we need. Got to have it in design. There's a time limit. You have a, two years when the new permit starts, and you have to show everything you have in design. And then you have that permit process to get done. So this would give us credit for the next permit.
Okay, thank you.
Next project down, R Avenue, F4 Basin Capacity at 350,000 in 27. St. Mary's Drive Culvert Replacement at 475,000 in 2027, brings a total 2027 request of 1.445 million.
Mayor Miller? Mr. Walters.
The Storm Convance, R Avenue, F4 Basin Capacity, do I understand that correctly as just an evaluation of opportunities and not actually an upsizing of the pipe?
We do have some flooding issue, well, not flooding, but capacity issues there. It was found in our-
Right, but is the project to fix the problem or just to evaluate the opportunities?
Evaluate and see what we can do with them, yeah.
So then the actual fix would be quite a bit more expensive?
Yeah.
I believe this is the one we've been talking about for quite some time. I mean, many years, many years?
Yes, many years, yes.
Can, can we, can we do it next year?
With what I'm looking, with the money we have, no.
So you'll, you'll notice there's, there's three, the Storm System Restore and Upgrade, Outfall Evaluation and Rehab. I think there's a third one in there. Anyway, anyhow, we usually have a typical project that we just, when things come up, we fix, you know, things that break in the system. You'll notice we swept all of those things just to fund the two projects that we thought were the highest priority. We, we did that because of the revenue situation.
Okay, okay.
So yes, we would love to do it, but we think these other two are a higher priority to do next year.
And then another consideration would be that, you know, the model we showed you to raise the rate for Storm of $5 gets you roughly, you know, 400, $450,000 a year. If council felt that it was important to do some additional work in Storm, you could potentially do a more substantial increase than $5.
But this is based on the $5?
Correct.
As a hypothetical?
Yeah, and Storm also will likely have roughly half a million dollars available in cash to spend as well due to some underspending this year. So we do feel confident that we'd have the money for these two projects that were prioritized for 2026.
Kind of, kind of to that point in big picture, if we don't raise the rates, there is no capital program in the Stormwater Utility. And then we have operating cuts on, in addition to, to right-size the, the utility.
That drops us down into 2028, Marion Way Pond at 300,000, Clyde Creek at 250,000, 34th Street Conveyance, 150,000 for a total of 1.7 million in 2028. New projects, 2029, Cranberry Creek Restoration at 250,000, 37th Street Conveyance, 120,000, and R Avenue Enhancements, 280,000, 1.5 million total in 2029. 32nd Street, 2030, 40,000 to begin that project, another additional 254,000 in 2031. And then Q Avenue Conveyance out at 2031 at 1.3 million.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters.
So what's R Avenue Enhancements?
Uh, the bio-
Did I miss that one?
It, it's me. So there's, there's two of these in here. There's one for R Avenue, and there's also one for Commercial Avenue. Obviously, a nice to have, it's, it's not a must-have, but the, I'd say the project is not as aesthetically pleasing as, as I would like to see as our gateway, one of our gateways in our community. And that money would be to actually try to fix that and improve the, the appearance of our avenue.
The, the street, they exist, they exist, you're, I'm sorry. The description of the project is to improve the street with Stormwater Enhancements?
It's, it's the rain gardens. The, the rain gardens, we just installed some 24 rain gardens out there, and it's, let's say they're not exactly the most attractive rain gardens I've seen in our arterial.
But we likely wouldn't have the money for that till 2029?
I'd say, like, it's, it's a nice to have, that's why it got pretty much way laid down the road that far.
Is this one something that we could get grants for, since rain garden is in the name? Or maybe it's not in the name yet, but maybe it could be in the name?
Usually if you're retrofitting in rain guards, if you're just trying to fix the ones you have, I, I think you'd be a pretty tough sell in the granting cycles, but something we could try, for sure. There's quite a bit of grant money available in, in Stormwater, especially if you're doing a stream restoration project. But just Stormwater in general, you can usually pull down some money from the state level.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton.
Could, do you talk briefly about the Cranberry Creek Restoration and Habitat Improvements? Is that a, I mean, I think it sounds like a good idea, but can you just describe it a little bit?
So they, this was identified in the Stormwater Master Plan, and there's issues with potential flooding. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, there's, there's issues of potential flooding and erosion, plus we have the dam up there. So that would be one that we'd want to fix and restore. I do know at one time, we, I think we verified, Andy backed me up on this, but because of the steepness, we, it wouldn't be a fish bearing, or we wouldn't be able to do a fish ladder or anything like that, that was, or a culvert over, under Oaks Avenue. But this would, this would restore it up to the water would go where it needs to go, and we wouldn't have any flooding issues.
Okay, great. Maybe in the next iteration, that could be described a little bit here on this page. Thank you.
I think that's it for Storm. Let's, council has additional questions? Waste water? Okay, starting 2026, top project on the summary sheet, 206,000. So this program runs across the planning horizon, starts at 206,000 in 2026. Emergent asset repair and replacement, 206,000, again, runs through the planning horizon. Dewatering pump replacement, 150,000. Rebuild belt, filter press at 330,000. Recote clarif- Recote clarifiers at 400,000. Influent monitoring at 50,000. Admin building expansion at 520,000. New CSO pump station, 4.5 million. Dropping down, next project starts in 2027. This is nutrient optimization modeling, 150,000, '27 and '28. Inflow and infiltration project, 1.5 million in '27. That program would continue each year. Waste water treatment plant repair project at 600,000 in 2027, drops down to 300,000 after that each year. Bio solids north pad cover at 750,000 in 2027. Pump station number seven, I'm sorry, basin recirculation pumps at 750,000 in 2027. Then pump station number seven, conversion starting in '27 at 25,000 and 200,000 the following year, 2028. Brings us into the '28 timeframe incinerator standalone, 250,000. Nutrient optimization at 500,000. That program runs each year through the end of the CFP planning horizon. Basin rehab at 300,000 in '28, an additional 400,000 '29. Replace RES pumps, starting at 100,000 in '28, an additional 500 in '29. Upper plenum replacement, sorry, plenum replacement, 250,000 in '28. Tube sheet replacement at 250,000. Outlet replacement at 250,000. Next project down starts in 2029. $1 million for the Shell and Reef Factory rebuild. An additional million in 2030.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Hubert?
Quick question. On, on these documents in the description, if this says the vessel's 32 years old, is that in today's age or in the 2029 age?
Repeat the question?
Yeah, so for the Shell and Refractory rebuild, the one that starts in 2029, the description says that the incinerator reactor vessel is 32 years old. Is that 32 years old today or it'll be 32 years old in 2029?
That's how old it is today.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Do we have the Brown and Caldwell technical memo?
That has not been published yet, so these are, these are all projects that are identified in that and that'll be published shortly.
Okay, great. Do you think it's readable by normal people?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
There's some differing opinions on that perhaps.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
On the pump station emergent upgrades and the emergent asset repair and replacement, on pages three and four, they jump from about 200,000, 212,000 in 2027 to 437,000 in 2028. Is that because we're trying to spread out the costs of one year between 2026 and 2027 and then we're looking at the cost per year?
Those were numbers that we cut in half given our, given our shortfalls for the next year or two.
Okay, thank you. And then just kind of related to Mr. Walters' question, I'm wondering, and this is a conversation for another night, when we look at spending the millions of dollars on the upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant and we have a, an upcoming alternatives analysis, so would these numbers potentially, and these projects that are further out, would these change based on our alternatives analysis potentially?
Absolutely. So that's, that, that is coming shortly, but we have to get these numbers in here now.
Sure, okay, that's super helpful, thank you.
Mayor, can I add, add that just real quick? So we're currently functioning with the incinerator to burn the solids, which is, I know it's gross, but, um, so it's still functioning. We had Brown and Caldwell come out and look at it and they, they gave it a better bill of health or whatever and they, they thought we could probably get another decade out of it. We probably going to need that before we go to the, some sort of other way of handling the solids process at the wastewater plant. And then there's other regulatory requirements spinning around and I'm not going to go down that path on a capital facilities conversation, but I just wanted to point out that we did get some good news back about the incinerator, I think hanging on with your incinerator, but we are going to come to council. Right now, we're working at the staff level, I'm involved as well, with Brown and Caldwell to really get our heads around like, what are the priorities of our community for handling the solids? Because there's a lot actually available and there's a lot of options and ways we can go. And I think we're, we're trying to tee up that conversation, have it with council, to make sure that our priorities are the community's priorities and here the community. And so we just wanted to make sure, before we go down this path of like selecting the next way to handle solids, that we, that we will check in with you, but that what you see in the CFP that, I, I guess, you know, he's, he's more of the expert, but the way I see it, I think we're trying to hold that incinerator as long as we can because it's the most cost-effective way to manage the solids side of the house. But it, it is getting old. And so like after another, if we could squeeze another decade out of it, that would be great.
Great, thank you. And I think that alternatives analysis would be a good opportunity for one of our work sessions as well. Thanks.
Transportation?
That's it for wastewater?
And again, same thing on the numbers there. They're based on the, a hypothetical increase of...
And then just one note before we start the transportation, there was a, a last-minute change that didn't get incorporated into the deck. And that was a line item, page 16, it will, will be pulled off of the plan. So that's the South Marches Point Road reconstruction from 2027. So that's just a change that didn't get incorporated into the packet. Sorry, Steve, go ahead.
Okay, starting in 2026, transportation CFP program. ADA improvements at 120,000. The annual pavement maintenance program we have listed at a million at this point, 2026. Sidewalks at 300,000. Commercial Avenue safety improvements, 500,000 listed for 2026, an additional 3.2 million in 2027. Oaks Avenue, active transportation safety improvements, 750,000 in '26, 5.5 million in '27. South Commercial Avenue paving and ADA, 3.5 million in '26. That's one of the projects that's sliding from '25 to '26. 12th and Commercial intersection at 1 million. It's another project that's sliding from '25 to '26. Fidago Bay reconstruction at 1 million.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
If we could pause and go back a little bit. On the South Commercial Avenue paving and ADA, do we show any TBD revenue funding that project? I mean, we don't have a line for TBD revenue?
I, I'm fairly certain that the TBD is shown on, on the funding source of utility tax in these, in these situations?
Is it?
Yes.
There's also 360,000 in grant funding listed for that project.
And that one's listed under grants.
Right. And then I guess just maybe one big caveat before we go too much further into transportation, where you do see a projects that are 100% grant funded. If the grant falls through, the plan is to not pursue those in the, the current fiscal year, so.
Is there any TBD fund balance that could be used for this project next year? Because this is very much a TBD eligible project and that would free up 1.5 million dollars in REIT. Or whatever the amount is that we could contribute from TBD.
Yeah, there, there will likely be ending TBD reserves this year, '25, that could be allocated towards that and then some portion of...
Do we have a sense of what that was amount to?
At this, at this, at this point, there's 600,000 in that fund. I, I just, just kind of off the cuff estimating, we would likely end the year with a similar number, slightly, slightly less than that. I'm guessing 400, 500,000 is where we'll end up at the end of this year. And then that TBD revenue stream could be allocated.
And then we usually bring in 700,000 a year?
Pardon?
We, TBD revenue annually is what?
It's about 1.1 this year, I think.
1.1. So why not spend it on this project?
We still have needs in the, in Fund 104 that that revenue stream is being used for. So we have, you may remember, going back to the 2025 budget hearings, all of our property tax allocation was moved into general fund, parks fund, cemetery fund, and library fund. So our road fund and our road maintenance fund is getting no property tax allocation this year and surviving solely on those other revenue streams. So in the road construction fund, it's surviving on grants and the road maintenance fund is surviving on utility tax, TBD, and motor vehicle fuel tax.
Okay. So that's inconsistent with our prior allocation of TBD money to overlays, right?
That's, that's correct. So instead of, instead of moving that TBD money out of Fund 104 and into 105, we're allocating those, allocating the existing revenues as, as needed, if, if that makes, if that makes sense. So those monies that are going into Fund 104, the road and maintenance requirements didn't go away. The, what went away was the overlay program. And we had a number of revenue streams allocated for that, including TBD, including REIT. But because of the revenue shortfalls we're experiencing this year, property tax was reallocated out of Fund 104. That 104 money, TBD money, MVET and utility tax, continues to reside in 104 and that's what's supporting the ongoing activity in 104.
Okay. And then in this year, we're, or 2026, we're programming $1 million for the annual pavement management program. 2027 through 2031, we're back up to 1.8.
Yeah, and I would ask council to take that with a grain of salt. We have not balanced our operating budget yet and I would not be surprised if those numbers changed.
Okay. But on the revenue side, for each of those years, we're only budgeting $400,000 worth of utility tax, which is, assumedly is the TBD?
No, the utility tax is the, this is the portion from the solid waste utility. Have to stretch back, way back to when we first put the overlay program in place, there was...
No, I recall that. So then maybe we should show TBD as a separate revenue line on here?
Yeah, I, I can add that. I can add that for our next, next round.
Okay. Probably we'll need more conversation about that in the future.
12th and Commercial, so we have a million dollars scheduled for that, 2026. Dropping down, Fidago Bay reconstruction at 1 million in 2026. Marches Point Road, 250,000 in '26 and 1 million in '27. 12th and K, 283,000, 2026. With an additional 2.2 million out in 2028. That would bring us to the end of the '26 projects, moving into 2027.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
12th and Commercial, why do we need to program any money for 2026? Won't that be all done in 2025?
Unfortunately, no. The problem there is the signal poles, so there's like one-
So we're not thinking we'll get them during 2025?
We were hopeful, but I wouldn't hold your breath.
Okay.
I'm saying one month to six months for getting those poles.
We don't even have an ETA.
I know, I just tell myself that, you know, optimistic.
It will be, so that, that project will be pretty buttoned up, just a project update real quick here. Everything else will be done, except to say the old signal poles will be sitting there and they'll be black asphalt where the, the sidewalk panels will be someday, but we didn't want to con, put the concrete down and then rip it all back up to put the new signal poles in. So it's going to, I think we have like another week and a half, maybe two weeks of, of work to do on that project and then it's just going to, it's going to wait until we have poles. And just a little factoid, the foundations of those poles are going to be 25 feet deep based on the, the soils analysis, so those things will be there after the hurricane goes through. There's not going to be any concern there, but I just thought I'd throw that out there. That's, that'll be part of the work in, once we get the poles, to put a 25-foot-deep foundation.
And again, that's why that black top will be there so it can be dug up. You won't have the nice concrete there until the poles come. So I've been trying to tell as many folks as possible, that's what it's going to, what it's going to look like when it's all wrapped up, waiting for the poles.
It's going to be pretty complete basically until the, the poles come. I think people will be really happy with the, it'll be done basically in the road bed. So it'll just be all on the side of the road in 2026, or when we get the poles, maybe sooner. There was, sorry to interrupt, but there was some questions from Councilor Moulton and I kind of see the, there's like Commercial Avenue this, Commercial Avenue that. So if there was some, if you guys had some clarifying questions about the different projects, we're here to, to cover that for you. Kind of a big picture, if you're going to go back to the beginning of the, if, unless you guys are okay, did you want some clarification on the different Commercial Avenue projects?
I think I might be the only one that didn't have that question. I just emailed it to you, those last two, we can, you can answer me later, almost.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
If, if I already wanted to talk about it, we could, we could-
I appreciate it.
Do you want to continue? Starting at 2027, we have R Avenue Phase Two at 500,000. Sixth Street improvements at 110,000. 30th Street sidewalk and bikeway improvements, 150,000. Gwamis Channel Trail Phase 234, 328,000 in 2027. That brings us to 2028 projects. Ninth Street Downtown to Marina Link, 250,000. Kansas, 350,000 in '28, additional 2.5 million in '29.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Fantini.
Shocker, I know. I had a question about this project, so obviously we're, it's kind of moving out a little bit. Fine. We had the 100,000 that is being spent on design in 2025. With that design that comes back, I know we've had some discussions about, hey, if we open it up, great, we're going to fix those, those two blocks, but what about the five blocks in between? Are we going to get any information back on that, like, or when we have that design finalization or?
So we have not initiated that design. We intended to, but once we realized our financial situation, we figured, so a design's only good for about three years tops. Like if a full design, it's really not, it's worthless after about a year of sitting on a shelf. So what we didn't want to do is go down the path of designing and then knowingly know that we can't, we can't implement, we can't, we can't construct it. So that's, I know that's a, that's, that's going to be a tough one for the community to see that pushed out once again. But we had to make some pretty tough decisions on, on prioritizing what, what we could do with the, the means we have, so.
Yeah, I will say that the, the small punch-through that was done, I think between third and fourth maybe, has actually been really helpful to the, the control of traffic. But I just, so do we anticipate that design coming in, if we're not doing it this year, which I understand budget constraints, we would still have to do it before we build anything? And is that the number that's in 2028 now, is 350,000 for design?
That's correct.
Perfect, thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Also on this project, 2.5 million to spend in a relatively low-density neighborhood is kind of a lot of money. is kind of a lot of money. Uh, the description notes that there's possible grant money from TIB Active Transportation Grant. What, what order magnitude of funds would that possibly be?
So if, uh, it's a chicken and the egg situation. So once we open up that last block, that road, there's a federal process, uh, to get it designated as a collector, then you're eligible for TIB. So we're trying to figure out a way to get that, uh, classification changed without opening that block first, because if you just look at the aerial, you, you can clearly see what the problem is, opening that thing up as a collector in its current configuration. So, um, I'm, I'm sorry, did I answer your question?
Well, um, I guess if it's designated a collector, it would be eligible for TIB money, maybe other sources of money. But then it could also be quite a waiting game before that money becomes available. So, I mean, Ms. Fantini asked questions about when are we gonna get the design? But I'm a little worried about, even if we got the design, where are we getting the 2.5? Because we're projecting that we would spend 2.5 million dollars worth of REIT. And I kinda don't think we actually would do that when we got to 2029, because there will be so many competing REIT needs.
Yeah. Keep in mind, that's just that one block.
Right.
Or the two blocks.
Well, I mean, i- is the design for more than the two blocks?
The design had a, we were scope, we have, we have a scope and everything with the consultant that we didn't, we're not pursuing. But the, we, the, part of the design was to look up the other five blocks and be like-
Uh-huh, yeah.
This is what you're gonna have to do to just at least make it safe. Um, but that construction cost, that doesn't include doing anything except those, those first two blocks. Those other five blocks are an additional amount. So it's, it's a few million, probably more than just the two blocks. Just to, just to make it, um, pass the safety test that like, okay, people, you know, people are gonna be able to drive straight down the road instead of jogging back and forth with the road configuration now.
Hmm. Uh, well, this one maybe is worthy of more discussion as well. It's important to the community. It's not reasonably achievable in the next one or two years. But what can we do there to achieve it in the next three or four?
I think-
Go ahead.
Sorry. I think also part of what I hear from the community concerns is everybody's willing to kind of wait, because people know it's expensive. But in the meantime, there have been a lot of trucks that have gone through that neighborhood and that the roads have really deteriorated quite a bit. And so I guess the question would be, you know, there's some, a couple of those intersections are pretty messy. Is there, is there anything we can do as a city, um, to kind of improve that in the meantime? Or can something be looked at there?
Yeah, I think we can, we can take a harder look at that and keep that neighborhood, uh, specifically knowing that this is now pushed out. Like, I, I totally, I was bummed that we have to do this. Um, but at the same time, uh, yeah, we, we haven't really studied to like, is there some kind of intermittent, intermediate step that we can take to at least do something, uh, for that neighborhood? So, um, I'd have to get back down that. But I don't think that's, I don't think that's unreasonable, because yeah, there's, there's definitely a route through that neighborhood and it's probably getting more-
I'm sure you'll be hearing more from me about it in the coming, in the coming year.
Not a problem.
Uh, dropping down, next project, D Avenue Safety Improvements, it's 360,000 in 2028. And according to Safe Routes to the School, it'd be 100,000 in '28 and additional 2 million in '29.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters.
On D Avenue, are we still anticipating the 29th, 23rd street, uh, crossing this year?
Yes, along with the other two, uh, traffic safety improvements that we have planned. One on 32nd and, so like Storbuck Park, then the D and 29th, and then-
You've moved off of D Avenue. I was, okay. I was wondering what you were doing at D and 32nd.
Yeah, we have three that were in design. We're, we're trying, we're gonna get them done this year is the plan.
Okay. Thank you.
And the last project, starting in 2030 at 3 million, Commercial Avenue Landscaping Improvements with an additional 3 million in 2031. That's the full list of transportation projects. Be happy to hear council's thoughts, questions?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters.
Uh, that Commercial Avenue Landscaping Improvements, is that sort of an implementation of the South Commercial Plan in some limited way?
Uh, I, it would probably be good to have a conversation publicly about that plan and whether we are just jettisoning it or not. I, uh, we added that in there because there's literally no landscaping in Commercial Avenue, or at least there's very little. And again, it's just the same as our avenue. It's kind of a gateway into the community. We are just throwing it out there. It's a nice to have, but it, it would be nice to improve the, the look and feel. I think once we pave it, you know, um, that's gonna make a huge difference in its, its, its appearance. And I, I think we could do a, a little bit more to make it a little bit nicer. But, um, again, it's just a nice to have.
Well, and new development is occurring, and they will have to maybe fix sidewalks or add certain other elements. But what, what would this project include in terms of landscaping? Would it be narrowing the street?
Uh, there's kind of two ways about it. You could, you could do landscaping on the sides of the road, or you can put it in the middle, or both.
Like between curb and sidewalk?
Yeah. Like, uh, you know, trees, for example. We could, we could install trees or bushes or, uh, those type of things. We, we haven't really, I mean, we just kind of put that on there to say, if that was something the council wanted us to pursue, it's obviously, we've got a lot of years to think about it. But if, if, if that's something you're interested in, we wanted to get it in here, because we were interested in it, or at least I'm interested in it.
I, I think council should make the statement that we are interested in it, that that is something that we want to do. I mean, certainly from my perspective, it is. Although I think the description could maybe say, you know, this is very nascent and we're still figuring it out. But, uh, I mean-
I'm-
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Fantini.
I'm very supportive of it, because I feel like it's, it's something where, right when people come into town, because I'm assuming you would be starting it, not just, you know, the, the lower half. It gets people excited, right? And, and it pleases their eye to maybe keep them driving further, downtown, all the way to the, the Old Town Business District. So I think it's a, it's a great idea.
Uh, this is, this is the remnants of the 56-million-dollar, beautiful, um, entrance way that I think we all, uh, on council anyway, you all recognized last year that we needed to be realistic. But we realize that, staff certainly realizes that the elements of that is very important to council and the community to have that entrance. So I think we probably need to flush it out a little bit more about what it looks like and, you know, the timeframe. But I, I think, I think we're hearing from council that it needs to be part of, part of the plan in the future.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Fantini.
One more statement just now, as we've gone kind of through, um, several departments on the CFP. I really appreciate the fact that we're putting things in here now that would, we might not be able to afford right now, but are nice to have, because it's nice to have goals. It's nice to look, look forward. And I feel like sometimes we get so trapped and limited in what we can afford versus what would we actually like to have. And so I, I appreciate that approach, um, this year.
And maybe one thing to just note before we finalize transportation is, as Steve mentioned, there is a high, um, ask for REIT in transportation. So we'll be looking to manage this one very similar to operations where they, they obviously can't have all of the REIT that they've asked for. So those projects that are looking for REIT funding, we would look to the Public Works folks, um, and Logan, to prioritize the use of the REIT funds within that transportation, um, view or venue.
All right. Anything else, uh, Mr. Hoagland, you want to present to council? Miss, or Mr. Raym?
I think that's it, Mayor.
Counsel, anything else you want to? Okay. All right. Thank you. Great discussion. Uh, there's still more work to do, of course. Uh, but now we need to move into an executive session, uh, 7A for a potential real estate transaction. Uh, we, we had 30 minutes listed, but I think we'll only need 15 minutes. So I'll, uh, call the, uh, so per RCW 4230 110, uh, the council will move into an executive session for potential real estate, uh, transaction at 8:40 and be out at 8:55. so per RCW 4230-110, uh, the council will move into an executive session for a potential real estate transaction at 8:40, and be out at 8:55. All right, the time is now, uh, 8:55 PM, uh, council has concluded its executive session, and no action was taken.